Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of Tuckahoe for the month of November 2025. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Nancy, please take the roll.
Yes, Member Peretta.
Present.
Member Fiori.
Present.
Member Mito.
Present.
And Chairman Ringwald.
I am present. First order of business will be the approval of the minutes from the October the 8th meeting. Any of the members that were here, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion.
I'll second the motion. Nancy, please poll the members that were here.
Member Peretta.
Approved.
Member Fiori.
Approved.
Member Mito.
Approved.
And Chairman Ringwald.
Approved. Thank you very much. 210 Marble Dell Road is adjourned for the evening. Next up will be 167 Dante Avenue, area variance to park vehicles in the front yard. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Seth Mandelbaum. I'm a partner with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberg &amp; Stout in White Plains. Our firm has been retained by Yana Bolva, the owner of the property at 167 Dante Avenue. As you may recall, the property is a corner lot at the intersection of Dante and Parkview Place within the A5 residential zoning district. And the applicant has, I believe, been before you for a few meetings now regarding her request for an area variance to permit parking within the front yard of the property. We did submit a letter brief regarding the five factors and the balancing test that I know you're very familiar with in support of the application, together with an affidavit from Ms. Bolva summarizing the reasons supporting the benefit to her. And we briefed why we believe that benefit greatly outweighs any nominal impact on the neighborhood, as you're charged under village law with weighing. We also included support letters from three neighbors that Ms. Bolva obtained, including 164 Dante directly across the street from her property. Those neighbors unfortunately could not attend this evening, but we did have those letters are now part of the record. If I may, I'd like Ms. Bolva to just briefly walk you through some photographs and the evolution of the plan, including the most recent version, which we believe has addressed the concerns that were raised at previous meetings. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions, and we're hopeful the board will consider closing the hearing and approving the variance this evening so Ms. Bolva can move forward with this project.
Okay. We've been through this a number of times. The last set of drawings she has not presented formally, which you'll do tonight, which was to move the driveway over to the side of the house rather than directly in front. So there's no real need to go through everything that was went, that has already been presented.
Okay. If I could, maybe I'll flip the board overs.
I'm sorry, the revised drawings moving it to the side.
Yeah. Or the evolution of the drawing.
The evolution.
Here. Not related to that.
So. Let me just walk over here. So the evolution of the drawings. So as we've talked about the situation at hand, we are trying to create a front yard driveway at Dante, facing Dante Avenue. From where we started, which was this drawing over here, where we proposed the driveway in the front of Dante, in the front of the house, coming out onto Dante Avenue, it was going to be to the right of the existing stoop. It was going to be in front of the front windows. It would have required a simple driveway cutout, a curb cut, and that's it. We heard a lot of the public's concerns around aesthetics, the board's concerns around aesthetics. So we went back and repositioned the driveway in the second iteration, where we moved it to the leftmost edge of the property, which is much more in line with every other property on Dante practically, and much more in line with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And so from the last iteration to today, we simply made a few small changes. The last iteration had the driveway three feet away from the side property line. Now it's five feet away from the side property line, which is within code, and it's still on the left edge of the property, so still within the aesthetics. What we also did in that process is we actually reduced the width of the driveway by two feet and reduced the curb cut by three feet. So now the driveway actually takes up less space. It still has permeable pavers, as we spoke about before. But also worth calling out that the curb cut, because now it's smaller, it actually would take up about three to four feet less than the length of my car, which is currently, as you know, parked on the street every single day. So taking up ultimately less street parking space than in the previous iterations. That's the summary of the existing driveway. It was really from the second iteration to the third. It was really just a small shift of the driveway, a couple of feet from the side property line.
Thank you. Well, Mike, the side yard you mentioned, five feet, that's, I thought it was eight or nine feet. You get the driveway?
No. I looked into the code, the buffer, there it is. Well, she has the nine feet.
Nine feet was to a structure?
Yeah. So the structure is nine feet and the driveway can be five foot.
Five foot. Thank you.
Yeah. So I didn't cite her for the new, a potential new variance, because it's not needed. At this point, she only needs the parking in the front. Same variance that was requested originally, correct?
Mm-hmm. Good. Thanks. I don't have any other questions. Any members have questions?
The steps part, you're gonna bring it out more than, instead of being where it is right now?
So that's a good question. So just for clarity, the front stoop, in the original proposal that we submitted, where we simply kind of had just one single driveway, one simple curb cut, the iteration now actually requires us to shift the steps, not shift them, but to change direction of the steps. So right now they face forward, and the new iteration they'll face sideways. So with that, it's actually a decent amount of financial cost to me, but I'm perfectly willing to take that on to just create a better aesthetic and more in line with the neighborhood. Does that answer your question?
Okay. No.
Yeah.
No other questions? Look at you. No other questions? You have anything else you'd like to present tonight?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. Well, I thank you for, you know, moving and trying to come up with the best solution to this situation, so we appreciate that. As you know, the public hearing is still open on this. We're going to now allow the public, if anyone has any comments, then we will close the public hearing tonight, and we need to then vote on this, sorry, next month. I know, it's been a long journey.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the public hearing is still open regarding 167 Dante Avenue, area variance to park vehicles in the front yard. Anyone from the public who would like to comment, please step forward, state your name for the record.
I'm Deborah Pello. I live at 181 Dante, across the street from Yana's property. I'll just say that it's unfortunate that the current plan was not anywhere that anyone in the audience could really see the changes that were made. But my husband and I did come and take a look at the plan. And while, yes, the driveway, the width has been reduced and it has been moved to the left of the property, it is still significantly in the front of the property, and it still takes up a significant amount of the green space, the front yard. And what Yana and her attorney has failed to mention is that they have added a walkway to the right of the driveway, which again removes green space. And really, the opposition, which was significant, I think 42 people signed, or maybe 32, I can't remember the exact number, signed the petition against this. The reason is that aesthetically, you are taking away a front lawn to replace it with a driveway. And there are other homes on Dante that do not have a driveway in front. And one of the letters in support of this project is from someone who has, does not have a driveway on Dante, it's on Columbus. And those homeowners have expressed interest in putting a driveway in the front of their home. And really, what do we want from our neighborhood? Do we, if we say yes to this project, then what? How do we manage this? Is everybody who doesn't have a front driveway going to be paving over their front yard? We also looked at some of the, my husband and I looked at some of the pictures that Yana has submitted in support of her project. Many of these homes, the pictures are taken very close to the front of the house. So yes, you see the driveway on the side. But if you zoom out, you will see that the house that has this driveway on the side has significant more frontage than Yana's, and still maintains a significant amount of green space. It's not that the yard is significantly reduced for a driveway. I would encourage all of you to look at those pictures and go find those houses and see what I am referring to. I mean, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Elizabeth Petrosavitz, 194 Dante Avenue. I personally am against this for very much the same reasons. I believe that there's a correction to be made, that it is not in line with other homes on Dante Avenue. You are taking away green space, and you're replacing grass with concrete. That's the bottom line here. I also feel as though it will reduce in some way the value of my home. I worked very hard, I worked three jobs to maintain my home as a single parent. All the equity I have is in my home, and I feel as though that reduction may actually take place if we start replacing green grass with concrete. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, may we briefly respond to the comments?
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like Ms. Bolva to respond to a couple of the factual allegations. I'll just try to stick to the law. In New York State, concerns of neighbors in and of themselves, whether they're generalized concerns or concerns about a specific project, are not necessarily evidence. We heard a neighbor refer to potential impact on property value.
We know that.
Unless that person's an appraiser that has not an expert opinion, for example. Ms. Bolva is going to respond, I think, to some of the factual allegations. But again, I go back to the balancing test. You have evidence, you're weighing like the old scales of justice. We all, you know, the benefits Ms. Bolva set forth in her affidavit and testimony from many meetings versus what is the impact on the conditions and character of the neighborhood. You're hearing from the neighbors, from their perspective, and you have to weigh that evidence, as you know. But I would like Ms. Bolva to just respond to a couple of the statements that were made, because we don't believe they were entirely an accurate portrayal of the latest version of the drawings. Okay?
Just a few corrections. So one, it was stated that I'm taking up a significant portion of the front lawn. In the original proposal, I was actually only taking up 25% of the full width of the front lawn. And in the new proposal that we have today, I'm taking up 20%. So I would not call that significant. The rest of the front lawn remains green space. In addition, I did not add a walkway. I currently have a walkway. The walkway has just been moved, the placement of the walkway has been moved. As far as taking away green space, like I said, the driveway is, at this point, as small as it can be, and it has permeable pavers that we've talked about. So that obviously is, takes care of some of the impervious surface that has been a concern. And as far as value in the neighborhood, you know, as I think everyone knows, I've been doing a renovation on my house for the last year. I have changed it significantly. I have improved it significantly. I've increased the value of the house, which ultimately has increased the value of other houses in the neighborhood. So I don't believe that that's accurate as well. Oh, and thank you. And I also, in the new design, there's actually more landscaping than there was before. Right now, there's landscaping in the front yard, but if I take the driveway away, I'm now putting landscaping on both sides of the driveway, which actually creates more landscaping than previous.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So as you have pointed out, you are correct, our job is to apply the five-prong test, and it's subject to interpretation. You gave us your interpretation, and the board members here will give their interpretation, and we will decide whether or not we can go forward with this. I understand the concerns of the public, and you are correct, Mr. Attorney, in that we listen to them, but it does not apply when we, when we apply the five-prong test. The reason the codes, we've pointed this out before, the reason the codes have changed, because some of the examples given over the last few meetings, some other similar situations exist. That's why the code changed, to prevent this from continuing. So it is unfortunate that you don't have a viable driveway today, and you really don't have any other option than to, you know, and I thank you for moving it and changing it and trying to squeeze it in as best as possible. But in the end of the day, we're back to the five-prong test, and the members of this board will apply the five-prong test and vote accordingly. Thank you very much for your time.
Just a point of order, if I may. Do you direct preparation of a resolution for the next meeting, going one way or the other, or do you come to the next meeting and just vote based on your own internal discussions?
I don't know if I understand the question.
Like some zoning boards that I appear in front of will direct the attorney to draft a resolution for the next meeting approving the variances, and then you vote on it at the next meeting. Is that your procedure, or do you kind of think about it and then you take a vote at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes it's two. They'll say positive and negative, and let's throw it out there. And then you kind of debate it. Okay. All right. So I'll touch base with you, Gary, between now and the next meeting.
But the next meeting will be the last meeting.
Appreciate that.
I'm sorry this has taken so long.
Thank you, everyone. Have a safe and, safe and nice Thanksgiving. We'll see you.
Thank you very much. You as well. Thank you. The person on my right has to make sure I follow his orders. 33 Main Street, I believe, is adjourned for the evening, the dance studio, correct? Correct.
Yep.
Next up would be 70 Lake Avenue, area variance to legalize the existing finished basement. Hello, once again. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jim Andreo.
So unfortunately, I missed the work session. So let's go over what occurred in the work session. You?
Has anything changed since your last proposal?
No.
Thank you.
That was it, Mr. Chair.
That was it.
That was all. Short work session.
Okay. So then, I'm sure that the members explained to you that there were certain conditions in order to seek an approval. Remember, we spoke last meeting about asking you to remove the kitchen cabinets and the countertop?
Correct.
So you're willing to do that?
I'm willing to do that, yes.
And you had given us a verbal that you were moving back into 70 Lake, and you will be occupying the first floor and basement?
Correct.
For your personal use?
Yes.
There won't be three mailboxes on the front anymore?
Two mailboxes have been forever there.
I can't let that go. Sorry. I appreciate it. Okay.
Appreciate you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did close the public hearing on this, correct?
No. I think it's still.
All right. Anyone from the public? Thank you very much. You can have a seat for a minute.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from, the public hearing is still open on 70 Lake, my mistake. Anyone from the public who would like to comment regarding 70 Lake? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So again, and just for the public's sake, the concern of this board is to try our best not to have illegal apartments. Illegal apartment is very expensive for everyone in the village, because in essence, you could have three families living in a two-family house, for example, and that third family's not paying any taxes, and yet they are draining resources, police, fire, sewer, et cetera, et cetera. So we are very careful, at least as long as I've been on this board, to try and not make it easy for people to turn two families into three, or one family's into two. But when it's for personal use, we, of course, are willing to, to work with the applicant. Yeah. So in this case, we're comfortable. Okay. Does anyone have a motion they'd like to present?
I do. I have an area variance resolution.
I didn't. I didn't.
You did. Okay. That's how it works.
You should doubt me.
The application for area variances requested by Jimmy Andreo, whose address is 70 Lake Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York, Section 32, Block 7, Lot 5, for relief from the following sections of the zoning code, 4-3.6 floor area ratio and 5-1.6.3 increasing a non-conformity. The SECRE resolution is as follows. Based on this application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action, subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. Two, this zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make a determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. And three, that the area, the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Peretta.
Approved.
Member Fiori.
Approved.
Member Mito.
Approved.
Chairman Ringwald.
Approved.
Applicant resides at 70 Lake Avenue in Tuckahoe. 70 Lake Avenue is a two-family home. Applicant is seeking to finish the basement as to utilize the space for the first-floor apartment. By finishing the basement, the floor area ratio for this district will be exceeded, and thus a variance is required. Further, since the property is an existing non-conformity property, the increase of the floor area ratio will require an additional area variance pursuant to zoning code Section 5-1.6.3, as there will be an increase in the non-conformity. Since in the past, basement was used as an illegal apartment. Currently, the stove has been removed, but the kitchen cabinets and sink still remain. Therefore, as a condition of this approval, the kitchen cabinets and kitchen sink must be removed. Applicant shall further bring the living area in the basement up to the current New York State and Village Codes. Therefore, recommendation is for the area variances to be granted, as the benefit to the applicant of the area variances outweigh the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submissions and presentation that it has met all aspects of the five-prong test to the satisfaction of this board. The granting of the variance herein is granted on the condition that works under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, failing which, such variances shall become null and void.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Yes, Member Peretta.
In favor.
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Mito.
In favor.
And Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. That's it. Congratulations. Appreciate your time and your willingness to work with us. Thank you. Have a great night.
Do you have one?
No.
I have a big one.
That's okay. Next up, we have 200 Alpine Place. Look at this, area variance for a finished basement. See applicant here? Okay. We'll postpone that till our next meeting. 28, I'm sorry, 216 Dante Avenue, area variance to expand the existing driveway. Please step forward and state your name for the record. Good evening, sorry.
No problem. Good evening. Uh, my name is Stephanie Fox. I'm the architect for 216 Dante Avenue. Uh, I am here joined by the homeowner, uh, Naveen Ja. So this evening, um, the project, uh, in front of you is, uh, requesting to expand the existing driveway by about, by about five and a half feet. Um, the current driveway at its, uh, narrowest point is 8.8 feet. Um, and it's not very functional to accommodate, uh, the modern cars, given the grade of the, um, existing driveway. Um, there's, the driveways are pretty steep, and on the left side of the driveway is a retaining wall that's, uh, varies from anywhere from about two feet to four feet. Um, and I gotta, I have to go to my drawings, sorry. One second. And as you can kind of see in some of the provided photographs, um, the car that's parked currently in the photographs is a Toyota Camry, so, you know, compact, small car. Um, and the availability to actually pull up the driveway where the grade is steeper and open the doors is really limited, um, just really due to its width and its grade. Um, so two variances are being requested. Um, one is to allow parking in the front yard. Um, this condition already exists, uh, for the existing driveway, and we're just looking to allow this condition to continue for the enlarged area. Uh, likewise, the second variance is to allow that the grade of the driveway exceed 10%. Again, this is a condition that already exists, and, uh, it would be quite detrimental to the site to try to level it out more. Um, so, uh, we are looking to just continue that, uh, condition as well. Um, some things to note, uh, expanding the driveway will still conform, uh, to the maximum allowable building coverage of the lot, where 30%, 35% is allowed, and this will increase the coverage to 34.7%. Uh, the parcel is a double lot. And so, um, the impact on the green space would be relatively minimal. Up towards the house, there is, um, an outcropping of, um, retaining walls and, um, rock. And so that would be replaced, uh, with the driveway, so that's really not an increase in any of the impervious areas, because it's already impervious. Um, and then closer to the street at the property line, there is, um, a low retaining wall. Um, the extension would probably remove, uh, will remove two of the arborvitaries. Those will, can be relocated on the property. Um, that's no issue. Um, and so obviously, we'd be removing a portion of impervious area there by adding the new driveway. Um, or the, the extension of the driveway. Um, the other thing to note is that, um, that impervious, new impervious area only equates to 100 square feet um, of surface increase. Um, and, uh, as these impervious areas are just being supplemented by the existing driveway. Uh, the widening of the driveway and the curb, um, will also not have an impact on the existing street parking. Um, I did a quick study in that I've measured, um, the curb cut from the existing curb cut at 216 to the curb cut for 212 Dante Avenue. Um, and that equates to, uh, 65.8 feet. Um, no, sorry. Yeah, 65.8 feet. Um, so that equi, that means that, you know, three, that's three parking spaces, because a parking space is 20 feet. If you reduce it down to 60 feet, that's still three parking spaces, because it's 60 feet. But in speaking and in the work session, we will get that confirmation from the DPW that you requested. Um, and we understand that parking at Dante is a premium, but, um, there have been, uh, several properties um, along Dante which have done similarly. Um, and it sounds like you guys are well aware of that, but, um, so just next door, 212 Dante Avenue, um, their driveway width was increased and, uh, similar to what we're looking to do, uh, they've extended their, um, retaining wall out from the corner of the house to make the driveway wider. Um, likewise, at 251 Dante Avenue, they have a double-wide, uh, driveway for parking for two cars. Um, that's not what we're looking to do. We're just looking to keep a single-width driveway with, wide enough to be able to open the doors on both sides. Um, and similarly, same to 212, 252 Dante has also expanded their driveway. They look like they can fit two cars next to each other. Um, but again, like I said, we're not looking to do that. In terms of the five points, um, that, whether or not you agree, this is our, um, this is our take on it. Um, and whether or not there'll be an undesirable change, uh, to the character of the neighborhood, we don't feel that this is the case, certainly because the driveway is, already exists. Um, the house was built in 1924. Um, I can only assume that the garage, well, the garage was definitely there in 1924, because you can't even fit a car in it, maybe a Model T. Um, and so the driveway and the existing garage has existed for over 100 years. Um, and so, um, we're just trying to make it a little bit more modernized for that reason. And so, um, the other, uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible means? Um, no, um, that's pretty much just due to the fact of how the, the site is, um, configured. You know, it is just your standard site, so the only access to the house is from Dante Avenue. It is not a corner lot. There's not another, um, it's not a through lot like the ones on the other side that go through to Columbus. So the only way to access the front of the house, or actually any of the house, is directly from Dante Avenue. Um, whether the variance is requested or substantial, um, we don't feel that's the case since the fact that the existing driveway has been in existence for 100 years. And, um, we're just proposing the expansion of the existing conditions. Um, excuse me. And also if there'll be a, in, uh, effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, um, we are trying to limit, you know, the amount of impervious area. Um, and that's just by utilizing some of the existing impervious area there. So to try to minimize the impact on the lot. Um, and likewise, likewise, we're happy to relocate, um, any existing greenery that might be removed. And if you, board feels that you would like some more, we can add some, that's two. That's okay too. And if the death difficulty was self-created, um, no, because both conditions exist. Um, the condition of the, um, location of the existing driveway, um, has been there for a long time. Likewise, same with the grade. I think that's the gist of it for now.
Thank you. Questions?
So you're looking to expand the driveway by a little less than three feet on each side, which presumably is enough for a car with the doors wide open.
Correct.
Why, why do you need that amount of space? I think you were explaining something with the greater.
So it has to do with the grade of the property. So the grade of the, the grade of the property and the grade of the driveway is more than 10%. And I'm sure you've all parked on a hill in Tuckahoe. And the way that the, the, the grade, it's not that you're parking on the downhill. You're parking on the uphill. So when you park the car on the uphill and you try to open those doors, if, if they're not open all the way, the force, gravity, whatever, is going to make those doors close on you. And so the idea is that to be able to open the doors all the way so that the kids can get in, the kids can get out without getting crushed by the door. Um, and likewise, just so that you can utilize your car while it's in the driveway, getting your groceries in and things like that. Like I said, it's still gonna stay as a single driveway. It's just gonna be a little bit more generous so that there's a little bit of wiggle room now.
The, uh, the existing driveway, are you gonna get, remove that too and make it one big driveway?
Like resurface it?
Yeah.
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 What material?
We're gonna resurface it.
What, what material was?
You know, I would like to make, the problem is like the, you know, with the width, like if, it needs to look nice, and it's, it's steep. So we don't want to put any kind of like fancy stone or something, then it's gonna look like the driveway and the, the house will be just forgotten. So I think we want to keep it simple, so I think I might want to keep it the same color really, and just extend that, honestly. I mean, we'll look at some options, but I am concerned that it's with, with this grade.
Yeah.
If you put like some nice stone, it's just, all you can see is the driveway and not the house.
So it's concrete?
Yeah, it's currently, it's concrete, so I probably want to keep it the same way.
So you're gonna, you're gonna keep the existing driveway and just build on the next, on the side of it?
Yeah, and then try to match the color, yeah.
So would you consider, uh, pavers where the grass grows through the middle on either side? Aesthetically, I think it would look a little nicer.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, like, I want to consider all the options. I mean, you know, I was thinking about some stones, but then I thought like, if we put stones there, it's just, you know, with this, because of the grade, you know, you walk by the house. I don't want somebody just looking at the driveway, I'm like, that's the only thing I want to look at and not the house. So I want to keep it so that it's not, you know, jumping out essentially, so something simple. If there is suggestions, I will be happy to.
Well, I'm only thinking of, you know, runoff and, and the like, you know, especially with a grade like that.
Yeah.
Well, I think rainwater, to, to a similar, similar degree, um, a paver would actually provide, um, a less usable surface because of the grade.
Why?
Well, because it's not an even surface, right? So when you have pavers in all the joints, especially the, the, um, the, the permeus, pervious ones.
Pervious ones.
You know, they're gonna, um, the snow is gonna compact in there, and it's just gonna make it difficult on the grade, you know?
No, I'm just thinking of, oh, there's a neighborhood.
I would just have to research and see if there's a, I know that they have certain specifications as to which grade of paver can be used for each, um, percentage of grade.
I'm thinking of two in the area. I can't think of the exact addresses, but they were both in front of us and they agreed to do it. And personally, I think it just looks better and it catches the rainwater, but I never thought about freezing water and what effect it has on it. I had no idea.
Well, that's actually one of the things that's made them, that's the whole reason that in the winter, that it's, it's a difficult situation given the grade, you know?
So I just want to clarify that they're, they're only extending the driveway on the right side when you're looking at it, not both sides.
Right.
No, I know, I just, because I hear somebody saying that they were doing both.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
I mean, Tom, I mean, to your point, like, we are looking to see if there is something better looking.
Yeah.
And we'll be open to that, believe me, yeah.
But I also understand, you, you have to then maybe to match it, rip the whole concrete up and, I, I understand, right? We're not looking to, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
Build a Taj Mahal.
Anything, yeah, anything that looks nice on the top, we'll be happy to.
Yeah, so real fast, just thinking about the building code and stuff like that. I, I don't necessarily know if you're gonna be able to do that, because you, you know, you're gonna have to pin it and stuff like that, so you gotta look at the cost. Might be more prohibitive to you to just do a new driveway.
That's why we have building inspectors.
Correct.
What do I know? The, the good news, y- yes, a lot of these driveways, they've been on this board probably over 10 years. If they come in, they're, they're too tight, and people do their best. They'll go a foot or two in either direction. I like your proposal. You're only going a few feet off to the side, and you still have plenty of room before your neighbors profit. You're not on top of it.
Absolutely, so.
I think it's a fair request, and y- you're right. When they built my driveway, you know, fits a Model T. I wish I owned a Model T, but.
Well, I think, again, the, the fact, the grade is what really, you know, plays a part in it, you know? If the, the driveway was flat, like on the other side of Dante, so many of those driveways are flat. I think you could get away with a narrower driveway, because you're not competing, like I said, with the gravity portion of it. So that's why we are looking just to get, you know, like a little bit wider than standard for that reason. And the fact that we are limited with this existing retaining wall on that side, um, to, you know, that's not going anywhere, so.
Good. And again, you're going to the side. You're not going directly in front of, of the.
And they would still be at least, uh, 23 feet from the driveway to the side yard, uh, at 212.
So I just, if I can make a suggestion, because I know we were talking about in the work session about the drainage and the potential runoff of the 100 feet. Even if you could do something, just, I'm just throwing it out there to, uh, remove some impervious surface somewhere else in the property, I think we'll be okay with that too, just throwing it out there to you. I don't know if he, you know, he wants to remove a little bit of the, you know, put some greenie, greenage somewhere and remove a, a section of a, something. Something to just look at, if you could do it.
Um, the drainage is probably gonna be, like I said, not functional because of the grade. Um, and it's just a question of whether or not you would, the slope is still there. So to add the, to add the driveway, you know, that, yes, they're gonna scrape off the, um, the, the soil and, and the grass to put down.
I'm just trying to come up with a solution, because the chairman brought up the drainage and this stuff, so. Maybe there's something you could look at, like, you know, removing 100 square feet of your deck, or, I don't know. Just throwing it out there. That's all I'm doing.
Well, I mean, there is another, um, platform just right here, which would probably take up, you know, take off another.
Yeah, that's what I looked at. I saw that.
Because we have this whole, we're removing this, which is, like I said, and just replacing. I mean, we are reducing, like, we're swapping it out a little bit. Um, but like I said, in terms of adding like a drywall system or, you know, I mean, that's just gonna be even more impact on the grade and the environment, so that's kind of a, you know.
I mean, we are taking out that, uh, rock bed, whatever that is, right? So.
Right, she's got to do some calculations. I'm just throwing it out there because the, we had one down the street from you, and she had to put a drywall in her driveway below, so I'm just, if you can come out a scenario, I'm okay with it. I'm just throwing it out there to you, because we have 100 square feet of new impervious surface that we're gonna have to address at some point, if possible.
Sure.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Nope. Thank you very much. So you understand, we will open the public hearing this meeting. We'll hear from the public if there's any comments. Then next meeting, we'll close the public hearing and proceed with the vote.
Okay, thank you. And we'll have more information for you at that time as well.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for 216 Dante Avenue.
I'll second that.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public would like to comment regarding 216 Dante Avenue, area variance to expand an existing driveway? Seeing none, I will make a motion to leave the public hearing open until our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a great night. Next is 5 Oak Avenue. Area variance to legalize an existing finished basement.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Chair, Deputies, Counsel and Building Inspector, thank you for the opportunity.
Approved. You called us honorable.
We're trying here, we're trying. Um, so my name is Milot Shala. My first name is pronounced, it's pronounced Milot, and it's spelled M.I.L.O.T. My last name is spelled S.H.A.L.A. I'm the project architect for 5 Oak Avenue. I'm accompanied this evening by the owner, Rex Haliilai. I'll spell his name as well, so he's standing right next to me, also known as Rex. Rex's name is spelled R.E.X.H.E.P., first, last is H.A.L.I.J.L.I., Haliilai. So this evening, we're presenting together, um, with respect to the existing two-family home, which is situated at Residence B District in an interior lot. The existing two-family home is non-conforming. The property owner Rex, uh, proposed to an interior fit out of the lower basement level, which is exposed to daylight on three sides, and it's, well, it also has an adjacent garage, which is facing the front yard via the garage door. However, the daylight exposure is at the all three sides, which are housing the bedroom, uh, and, and also a space for recreation room, and also an existing fitted-out bathroom, which is a three-piece bathroom with a lavatory, a water closet, and a tub. As it predates this, this application, the prior application back when the house was built, had a bathroom which was drawn on a plan, and it was crossed not to be built. However, prior, the owner had built the said bathroom, and the owner Rex is proposing to fit out direct replacement in kind of the existing bathroom, as well as fit out of the existing recreation room and the bedroom. This results in a, in a request for variance, because we're, we're exceeding the, uh, as per Section 4-3.6, the FAR. So we're, we're exceeding significantly here. So the, we're seeking a variance for the, uh, floor area at the basement to be attached to the first floor, which is housing the one family in which Rex already lives. He already moved in there. The second floor is housed by the sec, is, is housing, excuse me, the second family. So he lives on the first floor and he's renting the second floor. And he wants to fit out the basement just so he can have a gym down there, a bedroom, and a bathroom. He's also proposing to have a small 15-inch square sink, which will be used for the bar area for a juice bar for his gym. So this evening, we're also seeking a variance for, for the lot area, uh, for lot coverage, excuse me, that's Section, uh, 4-3.5, and we're also, the existing conditions, which are non-conforming, are exceeding this zoning, uh, resolution. So we have, we're also seeking the variance for that as well. So lot coverage and the area variance. I can go through the floor plans to, to show the existing conditions.
Please.
Very quickly. So as you can see on these renderings, these are showing the alteration which was completed, actually today. Uh, Rex took some photos, and he showed them to me, and I printed those for the board to see at the work session. So those show the house built very similar to these renderings now, which means he changed the facade on the building. He fitted out the interior of the first floor, for which he was given a building permit. And now he's finishing the facade and the front of the house. So I'll walk you through the.
So, uh, one quick question. When did you buy the house?
So, please.
Okay, last December?
Yes.
Was the, was the basement finished when you bought it?
Was, uh, I think the previous owner, he used to live there, and we just was doing just like painting work, you know? And was existing bathroom.
The bathroom was in the basement when you moved in?
Yes.
Okay.
We didn't add nothing, you know, there.
So this, basically that the bathroom was, was already fitted out, so all the plumbing roughing is there. Um, it's actually kind of a, excuse me, I apologize. The bathroom is kind of small in scale, but the plumbing roughing was already there. Rex did not put in plumbing roughing. Uh, it was marked up on the original, I'll just reiterate, uh, that it was, on the original plans, it's marked up as a bathroom with a big cross on it not to build it, but the prior owner already built it. And I believe when the building official walked in, they did see Rex changing finishes, and Rex got a stop work order a year ago at the basement level, because he was changing finishes at the basement level without a building permit.
Okay.
So title passed on the property without anyone identifying that there was an illegal bathroom in the basement?
So when you bought the private, the title search did not show the non-conforming bathroom at the basement. They did, they did not pick it up.
And now you're looking to legalize it through the.
Correct.
Understood.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but somehow they missed it. It has happened in prior projects that they don't, they don't see the.
Seller's lucky day.
That's a law. It's really hard to pick up things that are interior on the house. Like if somebody puts an illegal deck on, uh, with titles sticks out like a sore thumb, because you have a survey. But with the survey that showed, you know, the house, the square of the house, but you really don't know what's in there. So it's very hard to determine when you buy a house, you know, if everything inside the house is legal. Outside, it's much easier to determine.
But maybe you can.
Yeah, so right, so now, while the public's listening, I've been trying to advocate, if people are looking at a home, come in, look at the building department folder. It's very important, because title's not gonna pick it up, people don't pick it up. Make sure that what they're representing, they're selling. sure that what they're representing, they're selling to is exactly what's on the, in the plans in the office. If they're not in my office like that, then we have an issue.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
That's a good PSA for the public.
There you go.
So I will just, if I may, just point out, I have this laser pointer, if I'm allowed to use it, I apologize.
Sure.
I should have asked, I, I'm sorry. So this is, the said bathroom is situated here, it does have a, a window here, this is the water closet, the existing lavatory, and the tub, which Rex is turning it into a shower. So that's the only change at the existing bathroom. With respect to the bedroom, these are existing closets, an existing bedroom, this is all open space. Here Rex is proposing a small sink, just to serve like a bar area for the gym. So essentially, this space will be connected to the first floor as a habitable space, recreation space, and it, it happens to be incidental use to primary use area, which is the building above and its foundation, and it's housing his gym. So we're just essentially going for that. Uh, essentially, it'll also maybe change of use as well, because we're attaching the incidental use, which is our basement, to the primary use, which is the first floor.
Is there separate access and egress?
Yes, sir.
Basement, in the basement area?
So Chair, there is an existing door here.
Right.
And through, via the driveway, we would step down through this ramp here and they will enter the basement here. This is existing garage door, which will house one parking space as required per the zoning resolution. So the existing garage remains, it's all existing condition.
What about in the back, there's no door in the back?
No, sir. Just existing windows, I'll point out window here, 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 there's also a window here, and Rex is proposing to add one window, which is going to be situated in the garage. He's a car guy, he likes to work on his cars, he's also in the, in the building trades, so he likes to work on materials, so he likes to do some work in the garage, he needs daylight.
And there's, uh, there's two doors in the front, one for, one upstairs and one's for the first floor, right?
Yes, sir.
Was one.
Okay.
Yes, it used to be only one door, and Rex proposed two doors for privacy, and he was granted a permit for those. As per the building inspector, Mr. Seminar.
Is there a door downstairs, downstairs by the garage door?
Yes, sir.
Right here, right next, right under there, right?
Yes, sir, it's this door right here by the stair. And there's also one here.
Yeah. So that, and that's not just the trashcan area that goes into the apartment?
So that's basically Rex just changed the door.
Yeah. This door was already something, this is for the electric, no, for the plumbing here on this.
So there's no, there's no access to the basement through this door?
No, no, at all, no. It goes just straight into the main and left.
Yeah, alright. Tom, there's an existing door on the side of the building, that's where the basement entrance is.
By the steps?
No, to the right. On this side, right?
On this side?
Yeah, so you walk down.
That's the only door?
Correct.
Correct, so they'll have one, one means egress through that side door on the side of the building, and there'll be one upstairs going out to the existing apartment.
Especially, if I may point out at the elevation drawing.
Oh, there you go, show them the elevation.
Hi, I'm pointing out at the elevation drawings, it shows the existing door here.
That's better.
So you're sort of like walking down this ramp here, and then you access at the center of the basement to the side door. Yep.
So on the interior, where does the staircase go to get up to the first floor? Is it into a common hallway, or is it into the proper of the first floor?
So it's sort of at the center, I'll point out, which here, let me just show, so essentially you would ascend here, you would, if you entered the side, you would walk through here, meander through here, and then you would ascend the stair here and then arrive at the first floor here.
In a foyer or in, 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 in the proper area of the first floor?
In the foyer, I can show you in the plan.
So you, I think you understand where I'm going, so.
You would land on the first floor.
It's a common area.
Yes, common area.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair.
So the prior owner could have easily put three families into this structure.
Yes, correct.
But you understand the dilemma in front of this board.
Absolutely, so as to, to your comment, with respect to the door, that just, you know, leads anyone to assume this will be a three-family home, of course.
I think in light of that, I mean, my, my, I need your reaction here, you wanna put the juice bar in the basement, it, it triggers the same possibility, is that something that's absolutely material to what you're positioning for the basement?
I don't think it's necessary to have the, uh, the juice bar sink here.
Okay.
Uh, this, there's existing plumbing there, just for record, the prior owner had a sink there, but that's been already capped, as per my review with the owner, as per Mr. Seminar's stop recorder, all the plumbing has been capped at this location, so the owner doesn't need to have the juice bar sink there.
There any gas lines downstairs, anywhere near there?
Only in the mechanical room, which is directly adjacent to the juice bar area, so we have our furnace here, everything is situated here.
Okay.
We should washer and dryer.
In, at this location here, there's a slop sink here as well, this is a little slop sink.
There's a full bath in the basement, correct?
Yes, sir. This one, so the shower here, there's a lavatory here, water closet here, this is the existing, as built, as fitted out bathroom. Yes, sir.
Okay.
But he's removing. You're removing the tub to make it a shower.
Correct, so the owner would like to have an ease of access from the gym, so he can just walk into the shower.
Are you proposing a bedroom downstairs, I can't see.
So this is an existing room, which has a closet, it has two windows, has a door, as per New York State twenty-twenty building code, this becomes a legal bedroom, so he's looking to keep the bedroom as.
So are you gonna put an egress window in, what are you doing?
Correct, so these windows will, will have enough width, and they're at forty-four inches above finished floor, and they'll have, uh, emergency escape capacity at five-point-seven square feet in open position.
Okay, that's what I, that's why I'm asking.
This will be the emergency escape here. So essentially, it becomes an interior fit out of, it's as if we're proposing a basement for the family with a bedroom for, for a nanny. And she, if she, if she were to sleep here, she would have her bathroom here and she would watch the kids while Rex is working and the wife is working.
Right, so just to clarify, you guys, not that I wanna bore too many people with the code change, but what happened with the code change is that whether you, you label it a living room, a deck, a, a rec room, the code now changed that they're gonna say, you know what, you're sleeping in it, therefore it triggers certain things that egress windows and stuff like that. So, you know, we used to be able to say, you know what, this is a recreational room and you didn't need the two means, now the, the new code, no matter what you're labeling it as, if it's considered habitable, it needs two means.
Emergency escape, in a, in a, in a smoke event or a fire event has to allow for the certain width of a window and five-point-seven square feet of open area in open position. We've accommodated that in the bedroom as well as the, as well as the basement, essentially we designed windows that look like double hung with a check rail in the middle, and they're actually casements that swing out. So they're from the, cuz he wanted to match the character of the, of his home that he bought, so with the, with the window supplier, we found a really nice window that looks like a double hung, it just casement opens out, and that's good for, you know, for emergency escape for firefighters to grab people.
No, I understand, I understand.
How many electric meters are there?
Two. We have them on the side here, and they'll, they've all been rebuilt to code, they've been actually built around the stock over proper channels to set off the material from the actual meters that built properly. We've monitored everything.
You understand if this board grants a variance, it stays with the building. So, well, you, you could say, this is for my use, and you could be there for five years, ten years, twenty years, you can move out, the next person moves in, our concern is that the next person turns it into a three-family house, that's why we're pretty much being sticklers on what's in this basement. Personally, I don't like a shower and a tub in the basement, but I understand. But an absolute no-no is, you know, kitchen, so that it couldn't be turned into a full, fully livable additional apartment. And I'm not saying you do it, but you sell the next year and the next person, it's there and they can use it.
That's what they, you know, the Chair, Chair's word and deputies are all worried about, what's going to happen when you leave? Is it, is there a potential for them to make another apartment down there?
Right, so don't take any of this personally.
Listen, now, I bought a house and, you know, I never think to sell, and now to say somebody else, it's not gonna change the three families, just a lie. You know, it's something like, for myself, I just wanna use to have a bigger space, we are a really big family, you know? And I don't wanna use it all, you know, for giving to somebody else, because that's why I fix it, I change, complete the house, like, how was and how I wanna make, because we live with my brother, it's my sister, my wife, and kids, and that's why. If I was, if I was going, if I was going to rent out, I was never going to change the house in the way I change it. You know, it's not gonna make a difference for me, a couple hundred dollar. I'm sorry, because my English also is not that good, you know, and.
Okay, no, it's fine, so, thank you. So you, you understand from all the board members, the, you, you, you said you were willing to remove the sink? The juice bar, sorry, thank.
Yes.
And we, we did talk about it, the plumbing has been capped, uh, it's already inside the wall, so we don't have to install this.
No, we don't have to install this.
That's raising concern with respect to the family living there, so.
Yes.
I hope you understand where it's coming from, so.
Chairman, if, if the board is going in that direction, since you were not gonna give, we're not giving a vote tonight, I would request that if you want changes, let's get them done, let's submit them to the board, let them review by you guys, this way, if we, we do a resolution, it's gonna match.
Of course.
Okay, good. If any of the board members would like to have a site visit, would you be willing to allow us to take a look at it?
Yes.
It would be one or two of us, no more than that. We would arrange it through the building department.
Yes, for sure.
We would call Mary Ann, Mary Ann would call you, say, when are you available?
For sure.
Evening, weekend, whatever's convenient for you, and if we can make it, one or two of us would like to come by and take.
Anytime, yeah.
And again, you understand where we're coming from. This isn't a personal matter, it all has to do with, we, we, we are in the business of not trying to make it easy for people to turn two families into three families.
Yes, I understand.
They're all one families into two families.
Yes, okay.
So Chairman, just to clarify, are you requesting them to remove that, this way they, they'll?
The, the juice bar, yes.
Yeah.
You said it was already capped?
The sink has been already capped inside the wall, we have removed it, even the prior owner's sink has been removed and capped.
Okay, so if you guys, um, as per request of the board, can you make the changes, submit them to my office?
Yes, of course.
Before the deadline for the December meeting, you can check with Mary Ann what it is, so they can get it into their December packet, okay?
A minor change on your part.
Oh, no, minor, it's very small.
Any, any other questions?
Any other changes, please, by all means.
No, I got none.
You're easy.
Mr. Chair, just, do you have the mailings, did you give it to Mary Ann?
Yes.
Very good.
This time, this time I got it right. It, it took me two tries.
All right, so you understand, you need to resubmit drawings with the, the minor change, uh, we'll be in touch with Mary Ann, she will reach out to you, and then if one or two of us would like to do a site visit.
Of course.
Over the next few weeks, that'd be great.
We will both be there to make sure that all persons are answered.
We'll open the public hearing on this next month, we will hear from you, there's no additional changes or questions or issues, we'll be able to close the public hearing and hopefully vote on it.
Thank you, sir.
Worst-case scenario, we would bump into January if this, you know, changes.
Just, just one more thing, we have two other board members that aren't here tonight, that they might be here next month, hopefully they see the replay.
Understood, understood, yes.